Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Approve of the agenda. Little approval?
Second.
Further discussion? Sue?
No, what?
We're trying to approve the agenda. We have a motion on a second.
Yes.
Doug?
Ken.
I had my mind on something else and it just...
Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Uh, citizens forum? I had one citizen reach out to me, Alex Gully, who lives on Baldwin Street. He'd asked about the stop signs at Baldwin Street. Now the project's getting closer. Wanted to know if that was something that the city was willing to address or consider adding the stop signs to North Street.
We can do an ordinance amendment for the next week.
Is that on Baldwin?
Baldwin.
Where he's wanting it?
Wants it at North Street, Baldwin, to slow the traffic coming into town. Not going out?
There's signs.
Both directions.
Both directions.
There is no stop sign. If you're on Baldwin, there is no stop sign. As you go past north.
Take it to the house.
Yeah, and...
And that's what he's asking for.
I think it's kind of a crazy thing since that's part of a highway.
Well, he's asking that...
Still residential district.
Yeah, it's still residential, but...
And that's kind of what it's about, is just slowing the traffic.
But there, it goes from fifty-five to forty-five to thirty-five to twenty-five. Isn't that enough warning that you should slow down? They're not gonna stop for a stop sign on a highway if they're speeding and doing all of that. I think it's... I don't think it's appropriate for the rest of the traffic that goes through it all the time.
So, he just wanted it brought up and asked of the city council, so...
Well, do we want to write up the amendment, have the public hearing? And if nobody is in favor of it, great. If everybody's in favor of it, then it's up to the council.
It works.
I'd rather have enforcement than extra stop signs myself.
All grist for a public hearing, right?
Okay.
Do we do...
Hey David, while you're writing that up, maybe include four-way stop at Fifth and Baldwin.
Yep, I have that down in my note also, because the council had talked about that, making that Fifth and Baldwin a four-way stop.
Be much safer intersection.
It was freeway before.
It's freeway now. If you are traveling west on Fifth, you don't have to stop. And so what happens is cars are coming west on Fifth and they have the right to go straight through the intersection. And the car coming down from north assumes that they're going to turn and pulls out and could have an accident. And I've heard people indicate that that happens frequently.
Or maybe a sign coming south that says, "Vehicles from the left, do not stop." Coming south on Baldwin.
We will have a four-way stop and a two-way stop on the for hearing, and we can discuss all that at that time. Putting up a sign as you suggest doesn't take any ordinance language.
Anything else for citizens? Eric?
The letter that we got with our packet is that handled somewhere on the agenda?
Six C is not the...
Street Greenwich?
Yeah.
On Fifth, okay.
Yeah.
Discuss that then.
Oh, yeah, that's six C.
What's on your name?
You're talking about the water line, Steve?
No.
You were talking about the Greenwich.
The letter from Eric Carlton.
Um, so I posed that to the engineer. The response that I got was because of our federal funded dollars. We don't want to bend too far into this. That is part of our consideration was to finish that.
Now, this, this project goes up to a certain point. And the next project...
The next phase.
Next phase.
Would be the finishing of that trench.
And can that be done in the winter time?
Maybe.
Digging dirt?
Depends on how frozen or sloppy it gets back there.
Spencer was supposed to be on, but Spencer stopped in tonight and said that he went down and looked at it. He said if we can... He thinks, and he's gonna talk to Wes first, that we could go ahead and put a small channel down there right now without having to have the permits and the B and R approval. Just enough to help direct more so than the, as a permanent thing.
Do you believe that that's something that we can manage with our backup?
He thought so, but there again, he was gonna be on to talk about it, but evidently he's not on.
Haven't heard yet. Any else on the citizens forum? So we were supposed to have a public hearing tonight, but that didn't make it. Is that correct?
No, I just didn't take that off.
What was the hearing?
I just didn't take that out of the agenda.
I thought we had one pending though.
Well, we, we do, but parks and open space need to meet to make recommendation back to the council on the park shelters. So that was one. I think there was another one.
I was thinking we had something else. Steve, what do we got?
I don't need to be tonight.
It is not on the agenda tonight.
There was one for the thirty-day something for the waste, the water treatment plant thing.
Yes, that was it.
But we couldn't do it, we didn't get it in. We were running it through the paper and the paper said couldn't get it in in time.
Okay, so can we add that for January?
That's what she was planning on it.
Very good.
We need to decide on January's meeting too, since the first plan's on the Wednesday.
Well, yeah, I won't be here.
I thought starting January, we're moving to Thursdays.
I think we are.
We need to do a resolution to do that, and we do have a budget meeting, what, next week or the weekend?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Two weeks out.
So two weeks out. So we should...
More in January.
We should put the resolution on it. And we can act on it at that time, actually set the date.
Are you guys going for Thursday then?
Well, when we pass the resolution, we'll know. The proposal was the third Thursday, right?
You guys are gonna make that up to us.
Join the club.
Can't do it on Thursday night, that's my TV night.
Well, yeah, if you got Thursday.
Wes, you blow in?
All right, now when we move on to business, discussion of action on Resolution forty-four point three, food payment application number two, to writing instruction for the replacement of Baldwin Street project.
Little approval for the resolution?
Before you do that, did Spencer give...
I did not hear back from Spencer. My recommendation might be to, to approval with, subject to engineers' concurrence or give these concurrence. I'm not sure how that works on their project, so... I was hoping to hear back from Spencer, I didn't.
He was supposed to email me and...
Yeah.
Because I talked to him earlier today too.
Okay. Because what, what was he waiting on to?
Riley's hadn't approved it.
Riley's hadn't approved it, so...
And it should have went to Justin considering it going to...
Do we need to get his approval before we pay? I don't think we do. He's just, it was just whether how much he...
We're gonna meet again in two weeks.
It could hold it.
Held.
Yeah, that, that means if you're meeting in two weeks, especially if it's the contractor that hasn't given their concurrence to the quantities.
Do we need... Do we need to add a, another, be it further resolved that the city clerk is authorized and directed to transfer funds from the following to the project fund?
Wouldn't hurt.
Because all fund transfers need to be approved by resolution. And so and you've been already asked to take funds out in a certain order, but it'd be a good idea to have the resolution authorizing you to do the transfer. So if the auditor doesn't meet your mouth ahead and shoulders with a wet move. So I can look that up and add that.
So hearing goes second on the resolution?
It's a...
Or you withdraw?
Withdraw the motion and make a motion to defer to the meeting on the...
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Correct.
So now we have...
Two items.
Two items.
On that budget meeting. A second. Okay, further discussion. Eric, Ron, Sue?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
This is going to be third. On to discussion, action on accounting software. If I recall our conversation correctly, G-Works has forced this upon us regardless of when we wanted to do it anyway, which also comes with this new hefty price tag. It is higher than what we had budgeted last year, I believe. About double.
This bill here is to pay for what we have right now, which is almost double what we were paying every other year.
But if I read the thing correctly, this is what we would pay when they finally get around to moving it into the cloud.
Right.
It's the same price whether we stay with this or we go into the cloud. And it's the same price because of the increased maintenance cost on what we have now as compared to the additional functionality that we would get if we went to the cloud.
Right.
So have you had a chance to look at the cloud product at all? Are you gonna be shooting yourself in the head because of this?
Probably. We were, Carrie and I were on a Zoom meeting with G-Works today. They were explaining some of the, the processes and stuff. They are only going to move over two years of our information for accounts payable and only a year for a payroll. We can go back, we can pay an extra six hundred dollars a year to have a read-only so that we can get to our old stuff, but they are not going to transfer any of it.
And the six hundred dollars a year read-only would be a, like we had before, where you essentially set a computer aside and they would access all the old stuff. And...
We could still get reports off of it. We could still, you know, in case we had to go back and look for a certain project, we could at least look at that kind of stuff.
And would the read-only license also allow Carrie to look at the current stuff?
To look at the current stuff.
I mean, right now you have a license that you can get into the financial and everything.
What we pay for this nine thousand right now is for both of us.
Oh, for both of you. So does the read-only license allow a third seat to access what would be the current stuff on the cloud?
I would think so. Because everything else is allowed. I mean, you can have more than two people with this price even. So...
So our options are to go with a different firm and port everything or bite the bullet and we will now have almost a ten thousand dollar cost. And the additional functionality that we would get would be being able to do time clocking on your phone.
People with this new cloud-based, they would be allowed to set up auto-pay so that they're not calling us with the credit cards or they're not going through a third party that we do now to pay. And it would all be in there, ready for us to go through it in the morning instead of us going through, having to get it off of the third party, bringing it across, putting it into our system.
Is there a per transaction fee of that?
There will be.
Of course there is.
Just like we do now.
Is it more than what we currently pay?
No. There is some other things that is going to make it easier once we learn everything. Instead of, some of the processes, we have to go in and out of different screens currently. And in the new, new technology, it's right, it's direct. So we always stay in the same screen. So it's not jumping around a lot. So it's going to be more streamlined. So it should take less time to do things once we learn everything.
Easier for the new clerk to learn when you walk out the door.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was one of the points they made, that it's easier for the new person to come in and learn the system compared to the old system.
What would your recommendation be, having said that you, you girls are the ones that use it all the time?
I want to keep the old system, but I don't like change, so...
It's gonna cost us the same whether we keep the old system or go to the new.
Well, the old system is going to go away at the end of twenty twenty-five.
So if we keep the old system, then we're still gonna have to go to the new.
So either that, we have to go to the new, or we're gonna have to find a new software. Which I have had two people call me this week about the new software, wanting to sell me new software. Because evidently, there's a lot of cities that aren't happy.
I've been through going to a new software system.
So have I.
Think so have you. And do you want to go that route, or do you want to go to the cloud?
I think going to the cloud's going to be better, at least part of it is going to be familiar to us. They're going to be transferring things across, at least for the two, first two years, or last two years of our stuff. So we're not gonna have to create files to go to a new system. We're not gonna have to set up all new utility stuff. We're not gonna have to...
Our old system was software-based, which means that the information that you guys were inputting and utilizing should have been stored on a hard drive, is that accurate?
Yes.
So technically we wouldn't need to pay that because as long as we maintain that hard drive with that data, we should be able to access it. They're just not going to update the software any further. They're not gonna provide any more service or maintenance to that software, but our data would still be there until the drive failed.
It would be accessing the, the information.
So what are you saying?
That we should probably pay the six hundred dollars a year for the extra services, once we've already paid five thousand dollars a year for a number of years, just to maintain this software? Because that data's still there, and it will be.
But how do you get to it?
Through the software that's just currently not being updated any further. It's just, the software's still there. We paid for that software, it's there. They're just not gonna update it anymore. They're not gonna add any more features, they're not gonna do anything with it.
It's just like you got a computer with Windows ninety-eight on it, that you'd still be able to use it. It just wouldn't be as functional as Windows eleven now.
I'm not sure, because in the old system, right now, if we don't pay our yearly thing, our login expires.
Oh, gosh, you're coming and going, huh?
I would say we go, I, I move it to, we approve the payment of nine thousand six hundred sixty dollars. And that at the time, everything is moved over. We review whether or not we need to get the additional user license. We won't need it before then, right? Yep?
No, we, once we pay this nine thousand six hundred sixty, we've got the old system until the end of two, twenty twenty-five.
Which is just around the corner. Of course, they're doing it right at the worst time of the year, when we're starting to gear up for budgets.
Well, the last time I talked to him, we would not be on the list until at least March.
Of twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, so that's just three months from now.
It's in the middle of budgets, isn't it?
So then would it...
We, we wouldn't want to be...
But we can, I can talk to the guy, we can see if we can schedule it out for the...
End of April would make it so that the budget be approved. Then when they convert everything over and it all fails, and crashes, it's no big deal.
Appreciate you bringing the optimism.
There, there is supposed to be a better budget, way to do budgets on this new system.
Oh, well, maybe next week?
Well, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
If you say that it's not gonna start until March, does that then run March of twenty twenty-six rather than January through December twenty-five?
It, it's a year, it's January to February to December.
If, yeah. If we don't go to the cloud, it's still gonna be a nine thousand dollar bill until the end of twenty twenty-five. And we would have to find new software and convert everything over, but we'd be still paying the nine thousand dollars.
There's also a five thousand dollar savings of doing this now versus next year, is that accurate? There's a five thousand dollar training fee next year. If we waited until December to upgrade to the cloud. Further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion, Ken? On to discussion action on payment for new water line at six nineteen Baldwin Street.
Have you seen the letter on that?
I haven't. So what this is, is the resident at six nineteen Baldwin Street brought in a bill for backhoe and tiling that the company told them that they would take care of the bill, that the city would take care of it. Resident blames the city for having to replace the line due to the charging, discharging of the main line, causing pinholes in the service line. Tony said the line was an old line, it was galvanized pipe. City was going to pay for it, we would have used Matthew White plumbing for the job. Ordinance ninety point one-two. I'm just gonna skip most of it. At the end of it, the owner shall indemnify the city of any loss or damage that it directly or indirectly be occasioned by the maintenance of the water service pipe.
But that means if the service line failed and it washed a bunch of dirt onto the road, or it undermined the road, we had to go and repair the road, we could charge back for damage to the, where the city was damaged. Right? Isn't that what it means?
I don't know, I can read it either way. The issue of the city conducting work or service on their own lines, causing damage to the property owner's lines would not be held liable.
Well, I think in the ordinance, every place what mentions a service line, it's the private service line. And anything that the city owns is a main. And so the language to me does not say that. What do you think, Wes? The question's gonna be,
Yeah.
are we to pay this? Apparently, the service line is old and it failed. Has anybody else's service lines failed as a result of the work we've done?
The only other issue that I am aware of is that we had a sewer line issue, which came from
Is that shallow, right?
It was too shallow.
Yeah.
Same house.
Same house, when it was installed. And we had to fix that line in order to keep the process going.
And we...
Utilize the contractor.
Paid. We paid for the lowering of the sewer line, the sewer service line.
Sewer service line.
This is the homeowner at six one nine Baldwin, I don't know, can you hear this?
We can hear you.
Okay, so the sewer line, I, I paid for that out of pocket this spring, the sewer line that was damaged... This spring, the sewer line that was damaged due to the construction project is actually my next door neighbor. So I don't expect the city to pay this. I was just told Riley, like from my point of contact, to bring that to you. So but Riley turning that on and off, like I still have the pipe. The whole line is, was new. And then right up next to the house, there's like six, seven pinholes because they kept turning it on and off and it was only supposed to happen once. So I don't expect the city to pay that by any means, but I was just told to bring that to you and then you were the point of contact for the construction project.
So it sounds like you're making a claim against the construction project?
Correct.
And.
Just like the head engineer, Flo Riley, told me with that issue, the city of Maxwell was my point of contact. Is the only reason I brought that to you guys.
So.
And I talked to Tony about that as well.
Is this something that we turn back to Riley?
Um, well, maybe, and I'm not sure, you know, who, who, who said what and who directed what to where. Um, the contractor would not have the authority to assign cost to the city without approval of the city. So I, I don't know who said what. There.
I have it in text message from Riley's engineer that my point of contact for that issue was the city of Maxwell.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gladly share that.
And Spencer may know, and I don't know if that's, I don't, Spencer's not Riley's engineer, so I don't know if maybe that came from Spencer or if that came from Riley, a representative of Riley, because he's the contractor. Spencer may know more about that. Um, and so I can follow up with him, but, um.
It was, I, it's, I'm not, I can't guarantee the engineers, whoever dealt with easements that's asked and offered for easement, temporary easement. Does that help? I mean, I could probably pull this information if needed.
Okay.
So you're looking at being reimbursed forty-eight hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Sorry.
You're looking to be reimbursed forty-eight hundred dollars approximately?
Correct.
And the forty-eight hundred dollars was the cost to replace. The, uh, galvanized line. That has pinholes in it and you said that it was just a short piece by your house?
The entire line was copper. Like it, it is fairly new. They didn't know that when they pulled it all up. They just knew there was a break and. Hall's will attest to that as well, that a hundred percent, like their best guess was that, that did, or charging and uncharging of that water line. Back pressure all the way up and then coming into my house, a foot or two of it is galvanized. But the rest of the line is all fairly new copper.
And.
Yeah, once we yanked it all up, we knew that. But yeah, for the replacement of that line.
So they replaced it all the way from your house out to the street?
Correct.
Even though there was new copper and then digging it up?
There is. There is no way to know that without pulling the line. We just knew there was a break or an issue somewhere. The water started leaking off. And then the only way to do that is to take the whole thing out.
Um.
I mean, you could try to pothole it, but you're gonna come up with the same result.
So was there, was there multiple leaks or was it just leaking in one spot?
One spot, just where those, so the pinholes are all in a fairly small square foot area and around draft junk or high.
And are those pinholes in the copper?
I think there's two leading up where it transitioned. I'd have to go look at it, but it goes from copper from the city or from the street all the way up. And then I think it switches to galvanizer did out the pack when it came up into the garage.
All right.
So like, yeah, my main line and stuff in my house, like part of that is still galvanized and stuff. So I guess a mix would be the answer to your question, but bulk of that line, I mean, thirty feet of it earlier all the way to the city was copper.
Yeah. Well, the, the, the reason I'm asking is typically if we have a leak in a service line, it's able to be repaired at the leak. Um, I'm not sure the decision to replace it, if, if that's actually what happened, to replace the whole line out to the street, wouldn't necessarily need to be done. If the leak was found and you replace the, you, you can patch in a splicing of repair at the leak, unless I'm not understanding what was there.
So it was just a giant, like right around the house. At first I got a call from the city. They thought it was coming from the house. There is no way from above ground because that line is so low. I mean, you could have started, if you would have started by the house, maybe. But there's no way to identify exactly where that was at. By the time it was caught or noticed or we were on vacation notified, like there was so much water, they thought it might be on the. I was told it might be on the driveway or it might be down at the actual connection into the street.
Mm-hmm.
It, it wasn't like there was a specific, you know, where the waters come. They didn't know until they pulled it.
And then to, to repair it though, they were able to shut the line off and then dig down and find the leak?
Yeah, we, I had the city terminate it because I was out of town. The water was completely shut off at that point and then they were still working on the. Lines and stuff through the street. So I was advised not to turn that back on without knowing.
Is it, is this?
Again, I can't reference you to Hall or Frank Richardson. I call my for that. More information on that, but that's from what I.
Is something Spencer should, uh?
Yeah, I think, because, because I remember talking with Spencer about the issue when I, I recall vaguely now that the. When we discovered there was a leak next to the house and there was discussion on what was, where it was coming from. So that, that sounds familiar. Um, but as far as the direction and then what was done, um, I'll need to talk to Spencer on that one to see what he knows and we may need to talk with Riley as well. Now, was Hall backhoe and tiling? Um, is that, was that a contractor of, of Riley's at the time or is that somebody that you called to come fix it?
Uh, the contractor through Patriot Plumbing, like you, so Frank Richardson is from Maxwell, the old Patriot Plumbing. He's the guy that I have did my sewer as well. That's what he uses for any outdoor.
Okay, so, so that was, that was, the repair was done by, by you, not by the contractor?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it was done by, they, not.
Not by the roadway contractor?
Say that again, sorry.
It's, yeah, so you hired directly the repair company, your contractor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you used the same contractor that put the sewer line into Shallow Lake?
I never had a sewer line put into Shallow Lake.
Oh, that was your neighbor?
That was a neighbor.
Yeah, I have a brand new sewer line because I had a break underneath my garage. So we just redid the whole thing. So Patriot Plumbing, Frank did the inside of the garage. Hall did the rest of it to the street. The neighbors was broken and that was old. Barricada or whatever they used to do that. Like I wouldn't imagine that was any contractor recently. I haven't had issues with the sewer when I replaced it earlier.
Well, that's good. So you're, uh, Wes, you're going to talk to Spencer and who may. Uh, talk to the contractor and talk to Hall, uh.
Yeah.
And various parties and we have a meeting on December.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Would we?
Is that Tuesday night?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Will we be able to get a report at that time?
Yeah, well, let me check into it and we'll make a recommendation back to the city.
Now we have three items on that agenda.
I guess my other part to this is the ordinance of ninety point one-two. This is the way I've always understood it. The water line responsibility stops in the curve. For this, for the city.
But it's, it stops at the tap.
At the shut-off on the street.
The shut-off.
At the tap and the. Uh, from the tap to the shut-off. Uh, it's still the property owner's responsibility. The shut-off is the city's responsibility. Because it needs to be exercised periodically and the homeowner can't do it. And then from the shut-off to the house is the homeowner's responsibility.
And that's what we're talking about here is.
Service line.
The service line entering the house after the tap.
And what I'm interested in knowing is, uh, is it something that, uh?
Could have been caused.
Was, uh, yeah, can, can be caused by. Uh, the contractor as claimed turning things on and off so many times that it hammered a hole.
Good, yeah. And, and that, that can be caused. Typically, we see that more in a case where there's already some degradation of the line. There's already some corrosion on the line where. The water hammer, the, the opening and shutting can make that worse and, and make a spot that's already created pop through. Usually with, with. Good condition lines, just turn it on and off a main if it's turned on and off properly slowly. The, the, where, where water hammer comes in is when you close it quickly. And so if it was closed properly slowly, and I don't know if it was or not in this case, um, then generally it's not an issue, um, with the water hammer. Um, if it's, if it's already a thin pipe and it's just barely hanging on, any kind of pressure change can affect it.
But it's a gal, it was a galvanized pipe.
Which it can be. Now, we have seen some instances here in some communities where we're getting pinholes in copper pipes, which is kind of a strange thing. I haven't quite. Got a good answer on what the, the cause of the pinholes in copper is. Um. But we're seeing more and more of it, whether it's, uh, electrical striker or that type things, we're not quite sure, but. Um, so that's why I'm curious and maybe Spencer might know more on where the actual leak was found, whether it was in the old pipe or if it was in the new pipe in the copper. Maybe it's an instance of some of this that we're seeing. But, uh, but, so if the, the, the opening and closing of the, of the water. Summary, if done properly, shouldn't cause a good condition line to go bad. It can cause a poor condition line to finish its life, but, um, but it, but doing it properly, if it was done improperly, then that's on the contractor or whoever operated the line. Generally, it's the city that we. Say the city has to operate the lines for this reason. Um, so if the city operated the line and did it too fast, that could make, uh, again, a pipe on the margin.
Particularly the galvanized.
Particularly the galvanized is suspect, um, make it worse, but we'll do some looking into this and find some background for you.
Thank you, Wes. Uh, moving on to discussion action or discussion on ordinance enforcement.
Who is responsible for enforcing like the dog laws and the dogs that are running loose and? Who is to do that and who is to enforce other ordinances? Who do we have? What do we do? Are the people in this community aware of ordinances like the changes that have been made? From when they were here twenty years ago? They need to be made aware of what the ordinances are, particularly the ones that we have changed. And if they don't know, they can't be held responsible. And if they do know. Then who is going to make sure the laws are enforced?
That's the responsibility of the mayor and or designated. So some of the ordinances are responsible to the sheriff's office. Some of them are responsible to the Story County. Uh, what is it? Animal, animal patrol. Um, some of them are responsible to the mayor. Some of them are responsible to the public works director. What is it you're referring to?
Well, the dogs running loose is the one that I heard from.
Okay.
And, uh, I think anybody who is a dog owner should have a copy of the ordinance to know how it's been changed.
We've sent out hundreds of things on dog ordinances. No one ever pays attention.
Of course not. They don't have to pay for a license.
Even when they had to pay for a license, they didn't do it. Even when, even now when we ask for them to. To, um, sign in their, their animals to fill out the licenses, that's free. They don't have to pay anything. They still do not register their dogs. Believe me, I've got several people I know that have dogs that have never registered their dogs or have not kept up on their registers.
And it's not just that. It's the leash laws that have been put into effect.
I have sent out hundreds of letters on that too.
Okay, listen.
No, don't, don't, don't patronize me.
I'm not, but what I am recommending is that maybe we make copies of that ordinance and just say. We have made changes to the dog ordinance and, and deliver it. That way they can't just throw it in the mail, Deb, and I'm not putting you down.
Good luck with that.
What?
Good luck.
No, I'm serious.
No, I am too. Good luck.
Do you have a better solution?
You tell me.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I've been doing this for sixteen years. I have sent out letters. We have hand-delivered things. We have put them in the newsletters. We have put them. On the websites. We have, you tell me how we can do it better.
Okay, but have, has anything been done when they don't do it? Is there an enforcement mechanism in place? It's enforcement that I am.
You have to have proof that that's the dog and that's the owner and that you have pictures of it and you have to have. Um, statements. You have to have, yeah. We've done this through the attorney.
Well, I'm just trying to come up. It's not just the dogs. It's other things too. But all the junk that we all went around and found and all the garbage, has any enforcement been done on that? We, we need to get in place a fine, whatever it may be for whatever. And then if you have proof, then we can find them or something. To. Drum it into people's heads that we do have laws in this community and you are expected to obey them because I don't think we have that now. What do we do?
Every time I hear somebody say there's a dog running around, I tell them to call the sheriff's office. Every time. Because that is our own enforcement.
Yeah.
We pay them.
And they come out. They will come out on things and they don't do anything. And this is just one person that I've heard this. I've heard of a couple of people. That they don't do anything when they do come out because they don't know what our ordinances are. And I wanted to say. Forward because they were given that information right here in the office. So what do we do about that? We, we don't have an enforcement situation in place.
And what's your recommendation, Sue?
Well, first of all, we have to let the people know what the ordinances are that have been violated. Are you aware that, you know, you cannot keep a rusty old car sitting in your front yard? You cannot park over a sidewalk. You cannot. You know, these are things that have arisen that people know there are laws in effect. That they're breaking. But if they don't know.
How are you? How are you gonna tell everybody that this town has no? How are you gonna, how are you gonna tell everybody that this town has no newspaper? And I don't know if A M D even puts a newspaper out anymore, but if I wanted to read any article, they're gonna charge me online.
We have a website, but one by one, as we attack these things, they could be put on the website.
There's no extra pages.
They are, they are all there.
The ordinances are on the website.
They're all there. You have to be willing to go look at search now.
They sort of, if they don't have a computer and they want to know, they go to the library, you will be more than happy to look it up.
Well, I'm just, I'm try, just trying to get something in place where we're not passing it from one person to the next and the next. And nothing ever really gets done because that is a comment that I have heard around town. Nobody ever does anything. We can't have that kind of a reputation and continue to make changes and do this and put in all the work toward it, the hours put into it, if we don't get any results.
Sue, you are making some good statements, but you are not bringing any solutions. You wanna, you wanna fix the problem, you need to bring a solution. Otherwise, we're just complaining.
I wouldn't, no, I would like to suggest that we already have division of areas. Have a copy of the new things that we have done to make changes and hand deliver them to people saying we have made, as a council, we have made these changes and we want you to be aware of them. Cool, calm, collected, nice, and give them the changes. At least they can't say they're not aware of them.
So you want to deliver 378 pamphlets to homes?
I don't have that many in the area that I cover, but yes.
Sue, what's that equal?
Everybody has about one fifth of.
Yeah, there's not that many.
Seventy.
And it would be a solution. I am bringing a solution, but there has to be cooperation in order to get it done.
You're okay with printing those out? The cost involved with that and then the time that it's gonna take everybody to go deliver to each house?
Well, you know, that's part of it, $25 you get paid for being a council member.
True.
That's what I consider it anyway, that's, you, as a council member, you're representing the community.
The next piece I need then is I need you to give me what specifically you want printed out and what specifically you want the council members to deliver.
Some of the, I don't mean the whole thing, I'm just saying.
You put it together.
All right, I will.
It sounds to me like that's gonna end up costing the taxpayers more money than our $25.
I don't, why would it be costing them more for prints?
You have the cost of paper, you have the cost of ink, you have the cost of somebody making the copies for you. Unless you want to bring your own paper and ink.
I'll bring the paper, I don't have the ink, but I'll bring the paper, I've got reams of it at home.
I don't think that it's worthwhile for the city to be making copies of all that for this. When we have a library that has computers, if somebody wants to know it, put it on a city sign that says, please check this city ordinance news online. I mean.
They don't do it.
Oh, but when was the last time that the state legislature has knocked on your door and given you a copy of the, the new laws that they came out with every year?
Well, that's different than a city council in a town of 800 people.
Well, there's only a thousand cities and when's the last time the legislature, uh, gave those thousand cities, uh, a notice of what they passed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually when it comes with a bill or a D and R letter.
And all, all I'm trying to do is find a way to let the people know because they don't all have computers and they don't all want to go in there and know. I'm trying to provide a service to the community. And I don't think it would cost that much, and I've got the paper.
I, I would suggest that you do a mockup of what you feel are the important things to deliver to each house along with a cover letter that, uh, would say, that would explain why they're getting this and bring it to the next regular council meeting. And, you know, I would just assume not go door to door in January. So bring it to the next council meeting, we'll take a look at it. And instead of speculating that it's gonna be too expensive or not too expensive, we'll know how many pages it is and, uh, we can do a cost estimate.
And if anybody has other suggestions, I'm just, as a council, I felt we needed to discuss.
The ones that you think should be delivered because of the complaints you're getting would be a good starting point and when we take a look at that, there may be others that have other ideas. So, I'd say give, give it your best effort, bring something to the council.
There's so many people that are turning this into a garbage city and it's not, that's always a good little town, but we need to get it cleaned up one way or another. I'm just trying to move that along in some way, what I think.
Well, I can tell you, even when you put a citation for $30 or $20, I think it was 25, on a car, it still sits there six months later. So what are you really gaining? I can tell you that the enforcement piece is only as good as much as they care. Because that ticket, while it goes to the DOT to prevent the registration of a vehicle, what do they care? It wasn't registered to begin with. It was already five months behind on tax. So there's, there's a limit to the enforcement. Now, if you want to put it into an ordinance as to give the city the authority and also assume the liability of removing said vehicles after a citation, as a citation, as a citation.
I'm, I'm sure we already have that authority because we cleaned up Stan Russell's lot exactly that way. We went in there, we hauled everything away, we put taxes on the property, he couldn't pay them, and we ended up with an expanded park. Isn't that correct?
Then we deal with the co-op or the old gas station up here?
Conco.
Conoco, that was what, five, six years ago?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean.
So we, we have the authority to go in there and do it. It's not the easiest thing to do and you have to work with the attorney in order to make sure you're doing it correctly. So it's gonna cost the city additional legal fees, but is that a bad thing or not? I don't think it is a bad, if it is so important to get the, uh, junk cars removed, then it's not a bad thing. If we're talking about one junk car here and another junk car over there, eh, it may not be worth the effort, but.
But then you have to worry about being consistent. So if you do it at this place, an identical setting needs identical treatment, so it becomes a.
It goes back to having a code enforcement officer, which is gonna cost the city money because then we have to hire another employee and provide all the benefits and the training.
Contract employee.
Yeah, I mean, depends on how much you wanna, depends on how much you wanna push the whole issue.
Well, there are three towns that are looking at, we being one of the three. I think I've kind of kept people up, I'm waiting on a call from, uh, somebody that Dave Christensen knows, the guy at Mobile that is running a process where he handles a dozen small towns. Uh, he has a contact that was supposed to be getting ahold of me and I'm trying to make that connection. So it will be a pricey operation though.
But do we want this town to commit, continue to?
It needs to go this way instead of this way.
Yeah. I think the citizens of the community would appreciate the council doing something to clean up this town. My opinion.
I haven't heard that many complaints, so I guess it all depends on.
I even had one from a friend that came in from out of town. This is a junky little town. I, yeah, that's kind of what started all this in my brain.
Anything further on this?
If anybody has any other ideas as to what we could do, let me know.
So, Sheriff's Report. On to Departmental Report, Steve, you have the Sheriff's Report?
What the reason of it?
Thank you. For the month of November, assuming it's November. City Maxwell had a monthly town hours of 58.4, town patrol hours of 27.37, 22 point, no, 27.37, and the calls for service at 31 and 40 and 3 hours. Anybody else want to see it? Is, anybody else have comments on it?
Is there, cause I, I don't care about the addresses that are on there. Is there a way that we can redact that? It comes by email, right? Is there a way that we can redact the, the addresses off of there so that I can have copies of that so I can?
Track?
Track and keep, try and, try and follow up on some of the questions like the 14 hour harassment investigation? I mean.
All right, issues, uh, if you want the copy, you may have a copy as long as you maintain that copy.
I do know, I videotaped Monday morning about 8:15, 8:30, a vehicle driving around town racing its engine, really being obnoxious, noticeable, with a person sitting in the window, their fanny was on the windowsill, on the driver's side back door. And I've got the video here, uh, we did call, I brought it down, gave Deb a copy of the video. We called Story County, we have yet to hear back from them, asking them to call back. So I'm disappointed in that.
Not surprised.
Give me those details again, what day and time?
Monday, 8:15 to 8:30. I never got close enough to see in the morning. In the morning. I'll send you the video if you want us. So I am disgusted about that process. So that's right, south to school, he went east around. He, uh, over the ball, uh, went on blue, full size. Kid sitting in the back window, happy body outside. And then you'll see I'm stopped, I stopped on Second Street and Washington Zip Across. I'm walking right to left.
Are they wearing any tickets when they come into town?
Let's see, come from the right.
Are they, they're not doing any of that?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what tickets they write, I don't need to report their tickets.
We need, we need to know, I mean, they're coming into town, but what's being done? This is what you have to go get.
Yeah, I can look to them and I can, okay, I'll follow up with the sheriffs.
Okay.
We're asking Sue if they can provide citation numbers for our community.
Okay, okay, where's that? Cause they do have, they do have a markdown for like traffic, but.
Yeah, on to the fire department. We have, uh, zero calls from the month of November, uh, no accidents or injuries, nothing, quiet special events. Santa's coming on December 21st at 11 o'clock. And the city needs to vote on Sean Zizer. Little approval.
I'll say it.
Further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Ken?
Ken?
Doug?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I do agree. On to EMS department. Month of November, they had four page outs, they responded to four, one to four people per call, two, one to two firefighters assist, two for the city of Maxwell, one for Indian Township, one for Washington Township. Uh, monthly EMS meeting was attended and by seven, the monthly truck check was completed. The C Q I was completed by Story County Medical. Vehicle maintenance needed is none and nothing needed from the city. To the library. Library, excuse me, 171 books checked out, 110 movies, total attendance was 178 with 62 kids and 116 adults. Uh, Bridges has 157 now and 78 is on hold. Computer used with six adults and 18 children. Uh, current events, annual holiday party, December 21st, 11:30, 10:30 to 11:30 at the fire station. Side with Santa, weird. Uh, holiday closure will be December 24th, 25th, 31st, open January 1st. Continued budget planning for '25, '26, Diane's three month review and hired second filling person, Julianne, as Abby has been unavailable often. Upcoming events is the annual Friends of the Library fundraiser, annual chili cookoff, January 18th, and the Director's yearly review and policy reviews. On to the public library meeting minutes. Discuss hours, annual closures, your weather policy, freedom to read statement, freedom of review statement, library bill of rights, petty cash policy, bill payments policy, restroom policy, lost and found policy, fax policy, and the library card policy. And find and finalize the budget December. And review the three month review. On to the public works. Streets, getting a price from Jason Maxwell to fix storm intake first at Main along with new grate at Fourth and Main plus curb repair. Although if you guys have seen that one out here, it's, uh, big enough that you can fall into. Uh, they're, they're missing grate up on, uh, Fourth and Main, so just trying to see those and working on getting those fixed before we have an accident. I know they've been there for a few years. Uh, water pumped, 2.7 million gallons, uh, sold 1.09. Uh, leaking curb stop at 401 Woodlawn Street, we have a leaking main at Fourth and Baldwin. And working on getting both of those repaired. Sewer pump 3.3 billion gallons. Parks, restrooms have been shut down for the winter, getting price from Jason Maxwell to put dirt back against the concrete trail. We'll need to bring in more dirt from the yardways, Carl's leveling out the old burn pile site.
You missed the, uh, the DOT truck not wanting to pump up there.
Thank you. Uh, DOT truck isn't wanting to pump up with the air, uh, working to find out, figure out why and repair.
Use of the air brakes?
Yeah.
Had, had we, we talked about, it was almost coming due for replacement on that, right?
Yep.
So what, what is, I mean, he's trying to figure it out and repair it. What's the, where we have like a price of fix it or don't fix it?
Yeah, we'll need to see where they were at with that. I asked Scott the other day, um, for those. Basically, service life of vehicles, what needs replaced, what needs repaired, what needs, uh, just start that. On to the city clerk. They're looking for a computer for Kerry, using D and E for several IT issues this month. Still lots of questions on Baldwin Street, storm water along Fifth Street, Indian Creek, I talked about that. Uh, budget workshop on December 5th. Uh, Kerry will have parks and open spaces board meeting. Scott Oaks property sold, they're having problems getting the division recorded at the recorder's office. It's sold to the lower 12 acres and the top acre is sold to an individual.
Developer.
The developer, by the, the developer we've been working with bought the lower 12 acres. The developer, by the, the developer we've been working with bought the lower twelve acres.
It's individual homes and town homes?
The top twelve acres.
Top twelve acres, whichever way you want to call it. South twelve. The.
The south, yeah.
Unfortunately, the forty-acre parcel was purchased by one person who finds out that it went home.
Really?
So lots of real estate.
No. That was always going to be a challenge because of the front part.
Yeah.
Let me scratch that one.
I don't know.
Because it can't be divided again. Uh, on to engineer. Well, sorry, not quite to you yet. Okay, uh, budget report. So we are. Should be at. The more than fifty percent.
Parks is way over budget because. Is it something that we authorized and just haven't gotten?
Yeah, I don't remember what it is right now.
Okay, that's fine.
The same with the roads, bridges, sidewalks. Well, a quarter hundred eighty-six percent already.
That all?
Bless you. There's that. Looks like we are lying with where we should be. Ken, did you have something?
I just said it looked like we're at eighty-four percent for animal control. Well, it looks like we're spending money on something.
Uh, I believe that was two cats that finally got adopted after sp- spending a year in the shelter.
Also they, some.
Good.
A dog that they had came down and investigated.
They came and investigated a couple of dog calls, so.
Didn't we ever get the contract signed on that?
Nope.
Yep.
No.
In the budget, there is a line for trees. One thousand nine hundred dollars. Is there also another line for our tree program? Where we?
It actually runs. There should be one.
Because I know there's our tree fund. Had thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars spent on it and I just didn't know where that shows up in the budget.
I'm thinking it, it goes under the roads, bridges and stuff because it's a two-ten.
What? Maybe under what? It goes under what?
Under capital improvement, practical, capital projects.
Capital projects, where's the?
Down, second page.
Second page. I wonder, I couldn't find them first.
There's a, um. Category says roads, bridges and sidewalks.
Roads, bridges, sidewalks. Do you think the trees are in that?
Because it, it's a, um. The. Program is two-ten, which is also roads. And you put it under roads, um, the right of way. Most of those trees are in the right of way. So we've created the.
Yeah. And we also have a trees program. And maybe it should be under the trees program instead of the road, the roads program.
Well, we'd have the capital project for trees, so that's where I put it.
That came first and then the other tree came second. Yep, okay. Well, now we know where it is. Thank you. The, you need a resolution, uh, to move, to remove the negative amount in the, uh. What is it? Three oh five, blue of trees?
Yeah.
Or do you do the motion, would a motion work? I could do a resolution. We can put it on the next meeting, December the seventeenth. Four items.
We won't get that on the way.
Will we do a resolution?
Sure.
Good.
You willing?
Yeah, I'm already doing one. Resolution. For tree. Transfer. We have ordinance. And what are the other two items?
I forgot already.
That's why I'm starting to write them down.
I like both things go.
Hey, number two.
The ordinance for stop signs.
Yep, our ordinance for the stop signs.
Pay, pay action two on Baldwin Street.
Resolution for, um. Meetings and stuff.
Oh, resolution for meetings. For regular meeting date.
Then where are you going to add something to the payout resolution?
Oh, yeah, payout resolution. Now, therefore the, it, be it further resolved, be it further resolved. Transfer. Okay. And this is all December, May.
December. I already wrote that.
I now have it written down.
All right. Now on to engineer unless anybody else has anything else to put.
All right. Uh, we'll jump in here. Baldwin Street reconstruction, uh, light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, but there's still some work to do. Um, so paving is done, uh, from what I understand, it's primarily, um, some finishing work, closeout item work. Um, um, and so, and with the large part of that being, uh, non, not under this contract would be our outlet to Indian Creek for the storm sewer. Um, and so, uh, an update on that. We are, uh, environmental team is working on getting the clearances. We're going through there. Um, and then getting the, that final design document and we don't need to put together a full plans. I believe the discussion was that the city was going to have you guys just contract directly to finish that grading out to the creek. Um, so, um, so we need just some direction for the contractor to do that. We had an exhibit, but it's not quite complete. But the, the environmental clearance is really the big thing on that and making sure that we're, tell that he's cross and eyes dotted for the clearances to clear it out of the creek.
Wouldn't just be grading because we have to dig. About six foot or eight foot down by the.
Yep.
Bank, yeah.
Yep, yeah, yeah. The digging, there's some, uh, some tree clearing. Uh, I believe Spencer was up today, uh, on the part of Ione's Trail. Doing the punchless walkthrough. So he was going to swing down and take a look to, to see, um, all the, on off of the creek there. To finish out what we think needs to be done there. Schedule wise on that, the concern we have is the tree, uh, tree removal. Um, what do we have to do there? I think, we believe it's mostly open, but we're not quite sure is what trees might have to get removed. Um, so we are in the tree removal window now. That's the, the non-bacteria habitat protection window. So we can remove trees now until March first. So any trees that need to remove, we need to do now. And so Spencer was going to take a look at that today. Um, and then after that, we can't remove trees without special, um, efforts and it's not really worth it. So. Um, so that's kind of our, our timeline right now for, um, keeping things moving to look at what period we have to do.
Did Spencer talk to you about the concern at the end of the?
Yeah, about where the, where the flow is going, yes, yeah.
We need to do a temporary.
Um, so we, we talked about that. Um, he was also going to look at that when he was down there, um, because you know the, um. If you remember the original plan, we were going to take it to the south, point the pipe to the south and it was gonna, it's, it's all potholly down there along the creek, right? We all know that. So. The original plan was to point to the south and have it work through either the grains, we didn't talk about building that didn't happen. Or just it, the, the current storm water does go to the wet south side of the road now. It's a smaller pipe, so not all of it gets there. Um, but it just kind of works its way down through the bottom. Where we've got the outlet now with the planning, we're going straight west. It, it gets into an area that's kind of to the north of the Baldwin, um, I'm sorry, not Baldwin. It's the street, the street area. But it does the same thing. It, it kind of just takes a longer route. It works down, spills up, spills over, soaks in till it gets around to the creek. He was going to look at today if there's something temporary we can do to, um, uh, direct it more to where it used to go. Previously, which is to the south before we can get the, the channel cut. Um, it shouldn't take a lot. We probably wouldn't do anything that would take a, a large storm event. Because if a large storm event comes, it's going to go where it's going to go anyway, but at least to direct the small storm events, the ninety-five percent of rainstorms that we get are less than an inch. Direct those to an area that's where it goes today is what he was going to look at. So that might be an interim thing to do.
And we'll have this done so when spring thaw and everything is.
That's the idea. I, I, yeah, yeah, that for sure.
Because we, we settled on west for, for five months ago.
Yeah, I know. And, and so the environmental clearances is what we're trying to get done. So, so I'd like to have a whole thing done by spring.
Yeah.
But we have to get through that process. So, um, but yeah, I, I think the interim for sure, it would, it would be done with the, with the current contractor before they let him go. Um, is what I believe, uh, Spencer was talking about as part of the cleanup punchless items that they've got going, we just have to do that.
The environmental, uh, permits. Uh, are not terribly onerous. It just takes time.
It's time. It, it, they can be onerous, but we don't anticipate them to be because it's all floodplain and as long as we meet the, the typical requirements and we know what we're going to have in the floodway. Which is don't fill it anything above what it is today. Um, well, basically only take material out, don't put any material in, which is what the plan is to do. Um, we don't expect there to be an issue. It's just you gotta work through the system and the process. Which is not at our control. It's core engineers being our floodplains. Back at the, so.
And we've actually submitted paperwork for approval. We're just waiting for them.
Um, I think on the floodplains we have core engineers, I don't know that we have because we have to do a delineation for wetlands down in there. And I, I tried to get ahold of them today and I couldn't get ahold of them to see where they're at on that. So there was some work that had to get done. Ahead of that, I'll have to get you follow-up with a, update on that.
We're thinking about changing our council meeting to the third Thursday of the month. Would you be available on the third Thursday of the month?
Would be.
Okay.
Yeah. More so than on Wednesday.
Yep.
That was a consideration.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah. Um, so that's Baldwin. Uh, any other concerns on Baldwin? Um, being used now hopefully. Um, I, I think there was a, a question on some signage. So in the spring, um, there will be some cleanup items in the spring, um, primarily striping, um, uh, seeding. And then permanent signage. Um, but they are going to get in some temporary signage. Um, there's a, I think one of the four ways. Um, Spencer said there's going to be some temporary signage through the winter. So.
Well, that needs to happen for the open route.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, yeah. So, but, but they're not going to be able to do the permanent signage yet. I don't know if the ground's frozen yet, but it's what he told me that they're going to do temporary for now and get permanent in in the spring.
You're aware that the council did not approve for the, uh, winterizing.
Yeah, for the winter, yeah. So, and we, we talked about that a little bit. Um, so, uh, there. I just had two sides of that. Obviously the contractor set his own schedule. The contractor didn't meet the, the completion date. So into the winter work is, um, is kind of his, you know, it, his bed that he made. Um, there's another side of it, the, the, the way the DOT specs are written is basically you can't pour concrete in the winter without weather protection. So the way the DOT spec are written, because they know that if you pour concrete in the winter without the, uh, the winter protections, it's not going to be good concrete or there's a risk that it won't be good concrete. So the DOT spec are written that if you do it in the winter, it's going to have that and the DOT pays for it regardless of the completion dates. And, and generally how the DOT looks at that, my understanding is if you pass your completion date, then it's a liquidated, you're getting liquidated damages anyway. Because you didn't make the completion date, so that helps offset the cost of the winter.
So we should have approved the payment because then we would be, uh, getting liquidated damages. Uh, we did not approve the payment and so does that complicate things?
It, it, it can because the contractor could say, all right, well, I can't pour in the winter due to, per the spec because I can't, I didn't get authorized for winter concrete protections. Um, so I can't pour. So the liquidated damages, he, he could have a case that he's not, he, you, we'll still get liquidated damages because he wasn't done on our date, right? We still have the ability to go after that. Um, but he can't do the driveways until the spring now. Without weather protections is what, the way I understand. So we can't necessarily charge him liquidated damage until the spring because we didn't authorize that.
But can't he, shouldn't he take it out of his own pocket and, and just do it? I mean, in, in good faith, he should still continue with his job and get it done, but just have to eat it out of his pocket because we didn't approve it?
Uh. Maybe. It, it, the way I understand it, I apologize, I'm not the DOT expert. I try to avoid DOT projects when I can because their specs are written differently than how we typically do our public projects. Um, the way I understand it, the way the DOT writes your specs is they don't, when it's a fully DOT project, it's not even a question. They, it doesn't get brought to whether they all approve winter, they just do. And then they just figure it out at the end of liquidated damages or, or whatever fits past time. Um, so I don't know how that would play out if, if, if there's a, if there's a. Expect, or if there's, if it's reasonable to expect him to just do it. He, he might have an interest in doing it just because he doesn't want to come back in the spring to do it. So it could be that he might just do it and say, no, forget I want out of here.
But if he doesn't come back till spring, his clock's still running.
Well, see, see, so that's, yeah, so maybe. Because he, what he could say is that, well, I, I would have done it now with weather protections authorized, but. So the, he, he could make the case, and I'm not saying this, I'm playing devil's advocate if you will. I make the case that the city said I couldn't pour concrete because they didn't authorize weather protections, so the city delayed me till the spring.
No, he didn't start on time.
That's why I'll, no, I, I, and I know.
I've got a set for you.
Yeah.
July eighth is when the, the clock.
Yep, no, I, yeah. He started late, for sure.
They didn't start until the week of August twelfth, five weeks later.
Yep.
October second, you were here at the meeting and we talked about how many days we lost the weather from July until then. You said one. I agree with that one.
Yeah.
We added nine days work with the extra water line we put in.
Yep.
Completion date should have been November first with those nine days and the one weather day. Since then, I can give you a list of every rainfall we have.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and Spencer was going to share with me some numbers.
Yep.
On how they're counting seventy-five. One of these papers here says they have fourteen days left. I've done fourteen days over already.
Okay.
Well, that fourteen days was on a piece of paper that had a date that was like two weeks ago. Correct. They're still beyond that.
Yeah, and I, I, the way I understood from Spencer's, they are past their date now. Because Spencer was telling me, well, the way we're doing it, the, the way the DOT does it is, is. Every day that they're working, we're charging as a working day. So in those working days are what add up to be the liquidated damages. So.
Well, every day that they're not done is a damage day.
Uh, well, you, you might be right. I know when they're charging working days past for every day that they're working.
Can you have Spencer send me his? Can you have Spencer send me is what the numbers are that they're showing?
Yeah, I certainly can. Yep.
I'm asking.
Either way, either way, I know we're into LDs now. Uh, now what those LDs turn out to be and and LDs. It's important to remember to take those with a grain of salt because per statute and the Iowa code, you cannot charge LDs as a penalty. You can only charge them as costs incurred by the city. And so if the contractor argues that these are a penalty, not a cost, you can get into litigation. So.
Every day we can't use those costs and every resident.
Well, and that and that's the thing. So so generally when we look at LDs, we look, okay, we need to show a cost to the city. And then there's there's lots of ways to do that. One of them is you don't have the road open, uh, the 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 resident, you know, um, you're paying us to be the observer for the project. All that time that's past the time is time that you're paying us that's not past the date. So that's time. Um, you know, the the additional admin costs and things like that. So there's ways to do it. We just gotta keep that in mind that it's it's costs incurred, not penalty. Um, it's how the state code is written. So, um, so there is. Some consideration there that that when you when you just start counting days when nobody could be working. It's a little hard to charge that as like as an LD day because there's no costs incurred.
Plus they've been done.
Yeah, well, yep, yep. And so that's that's the incentive in the the way. But we are into LDs now, I believe, the way I understood it. So. Um, we're counting those, but I'll have him send you.
Please.
Where we're at as far as the days and and what the expectation is.
This is Bryce again at six one nine Baldwin. Um, I have some experience in that. If they are claiming that, all of the dirt and work should be stabilized pre-winter. DOT has a very specific rule on that. So if none of this is covered, you have an avenue there as well. I just figured it.
Yeah, yeah.
You that tidbit.
Yeah, and and that's the that's the, you're you're right. There's a a N P D S for, uh, stormwater control that they have to stabilize the ground before they seed it. So. Um, that's my understanding of work that they still have yet to do this winter is to get that stabilized, some of the finishing closeout work that they're currently working on before they stop, pull off and come back in the spring to finish.
I think it's actually once the dirt's moved, I think they switched it. It's a one to fifteen day rule. So as soon as they stop work and don't intend on doing anything to it, like anything has to be covered for erosion control. Whether that be match or anything else. So like the whole project, like right now, should already be stabilized for erosion purposes. Just, and I I have those back if you ever want those, but I just figured I would add that in there.
Thank you.
Yep.
My concern is that, uh, uh, last vote of the council may have, uh, given, felt like a moral high ground. But, uh, we may have ended up shooting ourselves in the foot if we ever have to go to litigation. And we should, in my opinion, uh, pay for, uh, burlap. And at the end of the project, uh, ask as ask for it as a liquidated damage. As a, uh, failing to do that. You know, does he have a right to, uh, uh. Walk away until the spring, uh, just raises all kinds of issues.
West in the DOT recommendations, can they not use a hotter mix of concrete during the winter? I mean, we always did that, had a hotter mix and still be able to pour when it was cold.
There's several different provisions in there. I'm not an expert on them. I'm not being a bidding guy or a DOT guy, but I have run into those in the past. They they do have the ability to do some hot water mix. They have some add fixtures they can do. They have the 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 burlap protection. My understanding is that most of those have a cost associated with it. We gotta use hot water, use the cost of the hot water.
No, it's, okay.
Yeah, so so there's still a cost there.
Chemical to make it a hotter.
Yeah, yeah.
Sandwich can't pour.
Yeah.
Burlap was simply a protection. It's it's a it's slow the cure heat from freezing a lot of the concrete.
And they still have to meet all the like thirty-four degrees and rising and all those times, all those requirements for when they can pour. It's not just taking four with the milli.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And and there's some other, uh, different. Maturity things that some contractors have.
Ready for water treatment.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll follow up on that, on the LDs on that one. Um, so water treatment plant, um. Yeah, so we're just wrapping up, uh, the documents on that one. Uh, schedule we're looking at there is, uh, looking for bidding. Um, likely in twenty twenty-five, construction twenty-five, twenty-six is kind of the thing we're looking on that one, or at least have it ready to bid. Um, next year, it should be a full year construction for it. It's a pretty small project. So. So that's what we're looking on that. So we'll be finishing that up this winter, um, looking to bid it, uh, early next year as as earliest if you, if it works into your guys' planning. Um. So and 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 we have to have that built by twenty-seven, August twenty-seven. So that's still plenty of time there. Um, Woodlong Stormwater Improvements, we got, uh, all the the new information for the fiber optic they put down through there. Um, the box is not a conflict of our proposed pipe because we're actually on the east side of First Street where we cross, or east side of Woodlong where we cross First. Um, but the fiber optic line probably is gonna be a conflict, but it's, I believe it's in the right of way. So right now, we've got it added to the plans. It's shown, shown as a conflict and it would have to be a. Um, unfortunately, they just put it in, but they would have to relocate it because it's in the right of way to franchise utility. So, um, we just, we know about the plan. So, um.
How would it not be in the way of the ditch?
It is. Yeah, the the handhole is not in the way because the handhole is on the west side of Woodlong. They've got a handhole here and then it runs east down first. But the 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 storm sewer itself, it crosses the storm sewer where we're coming across and then it's in kind of in the way of the ditch. So likely we'll be excavating over on top of it. So, but so that that was noted as a as a relocate. Um, and I actually was trying to get those plans seated today with that update in there, and I caught something at the last minute that I had to have my tech change. Um, so, um, the handhole wasn't showing up on the survey. So I wanna make sure. We talked about it, it better show up. So. Um, so I've got that now. I actually will probably send it to you first thing in the morning because I saw it showed up in that email today. So you'll get those plans when we talk about that. Um, with that Woodlong. Um. Yeah, some of the other stuff, uh, the engineering services will look at doing that for twenty-five. That's kind of a new one. Uh, not a new one. That agreement's new to me, so I don't have a good go-by. So it took a long time to find some good information on that, but we'll keep working on that. Uh, Rock Creek, Rock Creek Ridge Estates, we talked about that a little bit. Um, they have been in contact with our site development team to proceed to the next level for that lower twelve acres. After they won the bid. So hopefully things will be moving on that. Um, I don't know how fast or what their schedule is, but they did, they have been in contact with us. I know that. So, uh, to go to the next step. Uh, the Harbinger Nature Trail, uh, I mentioned earlier Spencer had his, uh, final punchless walkthrough on that today. He was up in town. Um, so all that is done. They're working on their final punchless items. Uh, that switchback connection is complete, obviously, but, uh, he noted the contractor told him that it still needed to be backfilled, which I think was. City was gonna do that, uh, was there understanding. So was that Tony on his list or?
It's on his list.
Okay.
Yeah, Spencer came in and told me all about it.
Okay, all right.
And I passed it on to.
Okay, all right. Just make sure it didn't fall through the cracks. So we thought they were doing it. They thought we were doing it. As long as we know that we're taking care of the backfill, then that's fine. So. Um, hopefully that's to everybody's satisfaction and working good and, uh, and they're still working on that treatment plant review for that well. Um. The movement on that one. This one.
Are we going to, uh, get some of that, uh, dirt work done before sledding starts?
I hope so.
Okay.
Well, if we have extra dirt down at Indian Creek, that could be some of our backfill.
Yeah.
Some timing of that.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, that's why I hope that we can.
Don't say hope, just say we will.
We will. It's it's hard to commit to things I don't have control over. Anyway, so that that's, uh, all I have unless you have more for me.
I had something else for you in Baldwin for last year. I had it and I lost it.
Yeah, there's a couple of things still working on that one to finish the cleanup. So.
Well, they're gonna put the mailboxes at least temporary back and.
Yeah.
What else did they say?
Well, I guess I have a question on on Baldwin as an engineer.
Yeah.
So what are your recommendations on a stop sign south at at, uh, North Street there?
South and north coming into town.
I mean, I just have.
North, south traffic stop.
Drops down. Southbound traffic coming into town on the.
To slow them down before they hit the actual residential area.
So, not being a traffic engineer, oh, I had classes and I I paid attention. Um, a lot of intersection control deals with conflicts and and car movements. Um, because it's a T-intersection, the way I understand it, southbound doesn't have any conflicting movements. Because there's, you know, there's nobody turning into that lane or out of that lane.
Right.
So it's a free movement. And so, uh, the the controlled intersection for that reason wouldn't warrant a stop sign. Now, for traffic calming or slowing, it could. And and that's not a, I don't believe that's an invalid use of the stop sign. Um, but I think that's why there hasn't been one there today because there's no conflicting movement.
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, yep, yep. Yeah, yeah. So I and you know, and that being a. I don't know if that's county decision or or city decision or the city. Yeah.
I was gonna ask, is there any concerns about, since it's a farm to market road, about stopping the traffic on it?
Um, you know, it.
I mean, they have to stop already.
They they they've stopped two blocks later, right? So they should, or three blocks later, yeah. So they should be slowing down coming down to the stop anyway. Um, you know, one of the things with truck movement is you worry about air braking when you come up to a stop sign. We're gonna have that three blocks later. So.
But only once in three blocks instead of twice.
Only once in three blocks instead of twice. So there there might be concern on that, but, um. So I. I'd I'd have to ask an expert on transportation. To me, it looks like six one half dozen the other.
Yep. We've had a request from the property owner on Baldwin who felt that it would help slow down the traffic. Because the concern is that, you know, it's gonna be like a freeway there, but it helps slow down the traffic if there was a freeway stop. At North and Baldwin.
Yeah.
And a four-way stop at Fifth and Baldwin.
And and Baldwin, Fifth and Baldwin is controlled how today?
Freeway.
Freeway, the same as as North?
Fifth going west.
Well, westbound is not. If you're if you're heading west on Fifth.
Oh, because it's it's just it's straight through movement. Again, no conflict.
Unless you live.
Unless you live on Fifth, Fifth left of Baldwin and then you're going through and.
And that's where we pass.
I I would say a four-way at Fifth and Baldwin makes more sense than a four, a freeway at North and Baldwin.
That you're not speaking as a truck driver.
But I'm not speaking as a truck driver, no. I think you'll you'll find a lot of people when they're just stopping, like they're planning to go straight south at North.
What what do you say?
We hit Jake break.
Hit the Jake break.
Jake break.
Yep.
Which is illegal.
I I think, you know, traveling south. You know, if you're going south and you're not planning to turn there, have to stop and then start up for three blocks and stop again. Could get annoying. Um, but annoying doesn't necessarily drive good policy. Um.
If you replace the speed limit signs coming into town, that would help because they're not very visible right now.
I don't think it goes forty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five, like you said. I think it.
It's forty-five, thirty-five.
I thought we had two of them.
No, on the way south.
Southbound.
Yeah, southbound.
On the way north.
Okay.
I missed it.
But they're not real visible. They're rather.
Those signs were aged and have been ordered.
Thank you. That will help, I think.
And I did mention the other day to Spencer, our stop ahead sign is clear out almost to the cemetery. It was three blocks before it says stop ahead. I don't know. He was gonna check and see what standard distances were.
Yeah.
But to me, it needs to be a little further south. I'm gonna forget I gotta stop ahead if I'm three blocks behind it. I'm not that bad.
Played a whole song on the radio by the time you.
Yeah, that's right. Another, another version.
I'm thinking I'm thinking three things by then. So, all right, so he's he he falls.
He's aware of that.
Okay.
The ordinance on the stop signs, do we want to have that at the budget meeting or just put that the regular meeting in January?
January would be.
January. Got it down.
Road may or may not be open by then.
Two weeks, I said.
Two weeks, that was, we were told.
That was what they hope to have it open in two weeks.
Oh, they can still be doing some of the finished work while the traffic opens, so.
They'd have to have driveways done, wouldn't they?
It'd be closed.
They could have temporary driveways. You you could get rock in if we didn't pay it.
Yeah, they got what? A and A is their subcontractor and they were gonna start the middle this week, thought, on driveways and sidewalks.
We're gonna have some fifty degree weather.
That's a good schedule.
Did you say something, Ken?
Nope.
Okay. All right, um, anything else? All right, uh, parks and open spaces board?
They're meeting next week and, uh, the chair asked me to verbally report that there is no report until they have our meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. On to council and mayor reports. Steve.
At the last budget meeting, uh, when we were talking about projects. Uh, I had eight or so historic projects that Devin provided. I've updated them and broke them into two files. One of them is the ones the council considered and the other is things that we wanted parks and open space to consider. Uh, I will send out copies of that. There were also things that, uh, the mayor had. Uh, that was in addition to all of that, and I didn't do very good notes. So if you would, uh, pass some of those things on by email. I'll try to flesh them out and have individual pages for them.
Or you can review them there in the shared folder.
Where?
Under, um, potential projects. I believe this is the title of it. It's a shared folder that I share with everybody.
And.
But I could send it to you.
In the in the root of the.
The drive, yeah. It'll be, you'll, you can find it in the drive.
Yeah, you called it potential projects.
There are five words actually. Um. Share drives. Hit the share drives? Try to remember the right one.
My chair is lost.
It's actually titled Budget Wishes twenty twenty-six.
Budget wishes. Twenty twenty-six. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
Thank you. Sue.
I was at the meeting by phone, telephone on November sixth.
Okay, for letting you miss the initial call. So hopefully we can add you to our bid on November sixth meeting.
So we go west door and. Sue, Phil Park.
Anything else, Sue?
I think I said my number.
Okay. Joe.
Nothing.
Doug?
If we had a reply from the letter that we sent to Huxcom about water usage or any follow-up from. Underground group.
Yep. Any reply from the letter that was sent?
I don't have you down, Sue, as even being on the phone. I have you on the phone at the July, at the November twenty-first one, on the phone.
Oh, yeah, that was when you were sick. You were sick on the sixth.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Uh, November twenty-first.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
Would you like to have me reset the letter?
Well, sorry, you need some kind of follow-up because it looks like they're ninety percent gone with all their equipment down there.
Okay.
Oh, I don't know what, that's some of the further communication might be valuable. That's all I got.
Devin Leo Moment, would you reprint, secondly sign, secondly sign?
Third Friday of next week.
Thank you. Uh, Ken?
Um.
Bless you.
Um, I just need to, uh, I just wanna send my condolences to the Hudson family and thank them for their service to the city. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you for that.
And for me, I have a letter from the Story County Housing Trust, uh, which was organized with the mission to improve formal housing in Story County. Apparently, according to them, they sent me a letter last year, which I don't remember seeing. Uh, but they asked me, or us, for six hundred and seventy-nine dollars as a contribution for fiscal twenty-five. And they would like a, another request of donation of six hundred and seventy-nine dollars for fiscal twenty-six. This is a, uh, they're a five-one-one C-three, um, and they sponsor low to moderate income housing, uh, grants. And according to their fiscal eighteen to twenty-four investment in Story County, the city of Maxwell has received thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars through this organization.
Hey, I don't know. Did we, did we do all that?
Well, it's, it comes through in a multitude of ways. Uh, I think part of this might have come through Li Heat receiving grants for funds that were set for low-income housing, uh, heating assistance. Might be part of this.
Oh, so we never see it.
We're not gonna see it as a city, no. Um, we see it through the benefit to the communities.
I think food at first might be one of them too, as I look through this list.
The what?
Food at first program.
Oh, which is Collins's program.
We have it at Maxwell now too.
Oh, we do?
Senior housing area.
So, uh, with this, they were asking, uh, as a reminder for our upcoming budget, they're trying to raise a hundred thousand dollars in local, um, matching funds. Uh, and this would be Maxwell's portion.
I vaguely remember the request last year. Did, did we send them money last year?
Well, according to this, we did not. And I don't remember.
We've sent money in twenty-three, twenty-four.
We did?
In both of those years.
So that would have been twenty-three.
December, you're talking about in December timeframe or January?
April twenty, in, in twenty-three and March in twenty-four.
And so is this a donation for the twenty-six fiscal year or?
For fiscal twenty-five, uh, they said that we have received a contribution. And then they are asking for the same contribution for fiscal twenty-six.
Well, yeah, I guess we haven't done anything for fiscal year twenty-five, right?
Right.
Uh, should we add it as a, uh, item to the meeting on December seventeenth?
Do you have to look at that, Nate?
I think we should, and I will give you another reason as to why. Um, because I've turned their grant program over to our developers, as, uh, assistance for development on a, uh, low to moderate income housing development. So, um, some of those funds may be directly coming back to us right away.
Actually, that fortunate acronym. Did you see what we missed?
Huh?
Oh, gosh.
Story County Housing Trust. Anyway, so if we could, uh, at least add that to consideration, I think it would be a good idea. So, anybody else want Sue Russell to write her a check there?
We should be able to do that by motion, uh, as long as it's on the agenda.
On what date?
December the seventeenth.
Okay, I'll write that down.
All right. So since we only have four items on this agenda, I was expecting an hour meeting, but we are two hours into it. So let's move on to consent.
Everything's there.
Pardon?
The November twenty, twentieth or twenty-first minutes to get done.
I can't hear you.
The November twentieth minutes to get done.
Okay, so we only have the thirteenth of the sixth. And Sue is not here on the sixth. Were you here on the thirteenth? Was everybody here on the thirteenth?
I was not here on the thirteenth.
So we have a mixed bag. We're gonna have to do those individually. So I move approval of the November sixth minutes.
Can, can I vote on that since I was only here for partial?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
And Sue's the only one that cannot move on that one.
Thank you. Ken? Ken?
Yeah.
Thank you. Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes. Was, was that a yes that you're still there or a yes that you're approving the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Move approval of the November thirteenth minutes.
Second.
Further discussion? Steve?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
It's a long way to the office.
It is a long way to the office. Ken?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Move approval of the current bill.
Second again.
Joel?
Yes.
Further discussion? Joel?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Ken? Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I move the adjournment.
I've had too much fun, I think, you know. Ken?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Sue?
Yes.
You want that printed, that copy back or?
Keep that, okay.
There's your special letter.